Good evening and welcome to the April 9, 2019, meeting of the Gilderlin Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment number one. We have one individual signed up, and that's Kim Blaseak.
Hello, I'll be very brief tonight, I wrote it down. Okay, good evening. My first comment is in regard to the contract renewal of the Honeywell Law Firm discussed during the April 8 Business Practices Meeting. According to the draft on the Board Portal, the contract is up on July 1 of 2019, and the committee is recommending a contract renewal with Honeywell for three more years. And it states in there, and I'm quoting, "Given the firm's demonstrated performance, service, and expertise." So that's why, I'm assuming you're recommending a contract renewal. But it also mentions that you'll solicit proposals from law firms specializing in education law and related matters during the 2021-22 school year, the last year of agreement, for consideration in the subsequent contract term. So I'm just curious as to why this didn't happen this year, because the contract renewal also includes a $20 per hour increase in non-retainer services, such as litigation. So I'm just concerned, not concerned, but confused, as why then wouldn't you have gone out for proposals now versus keeping them when they have an increase? Because realistically, law firms nowadays, and I know from my husband, their audit's done, which that was another question, if you actually have this firm audited. And also, do you send it out for quote? Because this district right now is trying to tighten everything up, so it just seems something with a $35,000 annual retainer for a three-year contract you would send out. Another concern is the draft states that the contract is exclusive of special education matters, yet Part J states that brief day-to-day consultation and advice on special education matters is included. So according to their website, because I understand that Mr. Honeywell would be the primary contact, but according to their webpage, they only have one attorney who specializes in special ed. So I'm just wondering if it's supposed to be inclusive of, or exclusive, I'm sorry, of special education matters, why that would be in the contract? And then my last question was, do you actually audit their services? My second comment, and I'll make this very brief, and it's not a negative, it's actually, I think it's good. It's in regard to a comment made by member Benjamin Goze during the March 19 BoE meeting. And I do agree that we should have a vision, but I just want to make sure that all shareholders should be included, not just the board. Because for a vision for the district, that's something that should include students, parents, teachers, administrators, board members, community members. And he had mentioned Bill Daggett, which I've actually met him and heard him speak on numerous occasions, and how we might not have a building in 30 years. I can tell you that special needs parents are a little concerned with that comment for a few reasons. But using Daggett's words from his, and I read his white papers, because I absolutely loved him at Education 2030. From his Daggett System for Effective Instruction, he states that traditional teaching has a vision set by top leaders, which is what I understand Mr. Goze was looking to break away from. But the vision using the System for Effective Instruction states that the vision is built more inclusively. So again, I hope that with the vision moving forward, it goes beyond a Board of Ed Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim raised some questions about the law firm. Can we arrange for somebody to get back to her, or do we have the answers to those questions readily available?
I can get back to her.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, which consists of the minutes from March 19, April 2, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, and the Personnel Action Items. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Judy? Gloria? Okay, I'm just going to ask that you raise your hand. May I have all those voting in favor? Please raise your hand. One, two.
So there's two different dates that we're voting on, right?
Correct.
The second date, I'm not there, so I don't know if we can stay in.
Okay.
But I know there's a bunch of people that were absent the day. So should we do it separately?
We can, I'm just doing the whole Consent Agenda.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the yeses were raised, hand raised?
Barbara and Ben.
Barbara.
Sean has not signed on yet.
Judy, Gloria, Barbara, Ben.
I need to know what we're voting on.
The Consent Agenda, which is the minutes, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, and the Personnel Action Items.
Okay.
Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand. So, three opposed. That was...
Five.
I asked what the opposition is.
Teresa didn't vote.
Hey.
And we need Sean.
And we need Sean.
What was in what?
So we can come back to it, when Sean is on. We'll come back when Sean is on. Barbara, can you hear us?
I can hear you very well, yes.
And Ben's on there?
And Ben's on there.
Yeah.
So we'll come back to this when Sean signs on.
Okay.
Okay, information items, curriculum and instruction, Damian?
Thanks very much. I'd like to start by offering congratulations to Gilderlin High School senior Samantha Delacqua. Samantha is a nominee for the New York State Education Department 2019 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. The Presidential Scholar recognition is one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Every year, one young man and one young woman from each state are named as Presidential Scholars. So congratulations to Samantha, it's really quite an honor.
So, excuse me Damian, she is the representative for New York State, or she's being nominated?
She's nominated.
Okay. Still, it's very nice.
Yes, it sure is. Quite a bit of information from the Art Department. And the first bit unfortunately is a bit after the fact, but you were invited to the 2019 Elementary Art Exhibition. I'm hoping some of you were able to get over there. That was held at the Gilderlin Public Library. The reception was held on April 2 from 3:30 to 5 o'clock with a collaborative art performance at 4:30. In addition, they were hosting an iPad Gallery to showcase their animation work that they have done as well. Additionally, we have 100 pieces of art submitted from four Gilderlin Elementary Schools to the Empire State Plaza Exhibition. This event is a one-of-a-kind, as it is the only Capital Region Exhibition for K-8 students. It is an opportunity for students to showcase how their art was inspired by artwork from the Empire State Plaza Collection. The collection consists of 92 works of abstract expressionist art displayed both in and around the plaza. It was established under the direction of former Governor Nelson A. Rockefeller during construction of the Empire State Plaza during, between 1966 and 1978. This year's exhibition is representative of over 1,400 works from 17 surrounding Capital Region school districts, and it was held from March 2 through the 18. We also have some high school art exhibition news. The following students had work selected for the 20th Annual High School Regional Art Exhibition this year. The juried exhibit is a representation of high school students throughout the Capital Region and features both two-dimensional and three-dimensional artwork. This year, there were 24 districts participating and 107 pieces selected, nine of which were Gilderlin High School, from Gilderlin High School. And the students who were selected were Serena Gurung of Grade 9, Devin Di Bianco of Grade 11, Charlotte King, Grade 11, Tracy Way of Grade 11, Barbara Barros of Grade 11, Taylor Thompson, also Grade 11, Shay Thompson, 12th grade, David Laparco, 12th grade, and Kaia Brown of 12th grade. A panel of local artists and art educators included Tony La D'Acico, Director of the Albany Center Gallery, Peg Foley, an artist, teacher, and painter, Takes Walker. And they reviewed and selected the work for the exhibition. The judges were impressed by the large number of very strong artworks in a range of media produced by area high school students in their art classes. Additional awards will be determined by the judges and announced at the opening reception. The exhibit will be on display at the Albany Center Gallery at 488 Broadway, Albany, New York, from April 4 through May 3. Due to the size limitations of the gallery, there will be two openings. The Albany Center Gallery will open the exhibit for the public as part of the Albany's first Friday on April 5, and reception specifically for the artists along with their family and friends on Thursday, April 4, from 5 to 8 o'clock. There will be a presentation with awards at 6:30 p.m., and we hope you will be able to join us for the student reception. And the High School Regional is an excellent opportunity to showcase our talented high school students, and the Albany Center Gallery is an award-winning gallery and an exceptional venue to showcase these artists. The Albany Center Gallery hours are Tuesday to Saturday, 12 to 5. And then one other piece from the Arts Department, additionally for high school. We're happy to share with you that we have a number of students whose artwork was selected for the 28th Annual Fulton Montgomery Community College High School Regional Art Exhibition. The show will be held at the Perella Gallery on the FMCC campus from Friday, April 8 to Wednesday, April 17. The artist reception will be held on Wednesday, April 17, from 7 to 8:30. This year's juror was regional artist Mark Wood. He is a multimedia artist, sculpture, and furniture maker. Fifteen school districts participated with a total of 361 works submitted. Seventy-nine pieces were selected, of those six were from Gilderlin. And we want to congratulate Allison Kumamano, her piece titled Emerging. She's a Grade 12 in Mrs. Gockley's class. Sandy Aldieri, titled Boo, also Grade 12, Mrs. Gockley's class. Cynthia Wu, Still Life, Grade 11, Mrs. Gockley's class. Sarah Quazani, We Belong Here, Grade 11 in Mrs. Best's class. Devin Di Bianco, Light of the Machines, Grade 11, Mrs. Gockley's class. And lastly, Gabby Demura, Female Figure, Grade 12, Mr. Green's class. And then my last item is just an update to you on what took place last week with New York State testing, and I'm sure you've heard quite a bit in the media about this. As was reported last week, New York State experienced technical difficulties with their computer-based testing system. Issues arose during the second day of E.L.A. testing, which was on April 2. These difficulties interfered primarily with student submission of responses. In Gilderlin, we encountered these issues at Altamont Elementary School and at Farnsworth Middle School where 6th grade students were testing. Fortunately, after a thorough review of our local submissions, we did not lose student responses as many districts across the state had. In response to the technical difficulties, the New York State Education Department opted to cancel all computer-based testing on April 3. Districts were permitted to resume testing for Grades 5 and 8 only on April 4. To ensure that all issues had been resolved, we locally opted to wait an additional day, and we resumed on April 5. These technical issues are being fully reviewed by the New York State Education Department and the Commissioner, and we eagerly await some new guidance and information pertaining to this year's administration of state tests. And for additional information, I've given you the link to the State Education Department page where regular updates have been posted.
Thank you Damian. Are there any questions or comments for Damian? Seema?
I just have a question about the computer-based testing. Not all the districts in the state are doing that, correct?
Correct. It's still an optional piece, so it varies pretty widely. Many districts in this area are doing it, but there are still pockets that don't have the infrastructure and capacity to do it, which is why they've extended the period for it to be optional.
Do they have these problems with the computer-based testing the past couple of years? I don't remember.
This is the second year in a row that they've had issues, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Superintendent information, Marie?
Okay, thank you. My first item is... Stand back. Just recognizing our newest inductees to the National Junior Honor Society. Last week, Thursday, April 4, 157 8th grade students were inducted into the National Junior Honor Society of Farnsworth Middle School. I want to congratulate all the students and their parents, and a special thanks to Mr. Laster, his administrative team, and the two faculty advisors, Mrs. Abassi and Mr. Roush, for all their hard work putting together the induction ceremony and in the selection process. It was a great first awards ceremony of the year, and well done for everybody. So thanks and congratulations to everyone. My second item is our final reminder about our efforts to recruit new teachers and other staff to our district and the region on Thursday, April 11.
Do you want to turn that one off and use this one?
Let's see. It's not going off. Okay, we'll try that again, that's much better. This coming Thursday, April 11, 2019, we'll be hosting the Capital Region School District Job Fair. It'll be held from 1 to 6 in our high school gymnasium right here in Gilderlin. Administrators will be able to meet prospective employees and substitute openings from all over the area for anticipated vacancies. We have close to or over 40 school districts, BOCs and organizations who are joining us, and that's awesome. And just to say that every year, the longest line of applicants to speak with administrators is in fact Gilderlin, so it's a nice point of pride. And last but not least for me, this is a very happy item. Everyone waits breathlessly to hear about our contingent holiday. So if the school district does not experience more than two emergency closing situations prior to Memorial Weekend, so we need to have two closures between now and then, all of our Gilderlin schools will be closed on Friday, May 24, 2019, due to unused snow emergency days that are allocated as part of this year's school calendar. This was listed on the calendar as the contingent holiday. All district and school offices will be closed on that day. And then again, Monday, May 27 is also a school recess day in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. So enjoy your day, everyone.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Marie? Okay. So now we move to Board President information items. There are three this evening. The first relates to the upcoming Board of Education election, which is scheduled for May 21. Petitions are available through the district clerk for any district resident who might be considering running for the Board of Education. There are three three-year terms on the Board that expire June 30, 2019. In order to be eligible to run for the Board of Education, nominating petitions with 39 or more signatures from qualified voters in the district must be submitted to the district clerk on or before Monday, April 22, 2019, at 5 p.m. Anyone who has questions about the duties and responsibilities of a board member may contact the superintendent, board president, or any current member of the Board of Education. A candidate must be able to read and write, be at least 18 years of age, a qualified voter, and a district resident for at least one year prior to the date of the vote on Tuesday, May 21. Further qualifications and information is in the packet available through the district clerk. The next item relates to voter registration. A public vote on the school budget, bond referendum, and Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, May 21, 2019. Voter registration is required in the Gilderlin School District. To vote, you must be 18 years old, a U.S. citizen, and a resident of the Gilderlin School District for at least 30 days prior to the vote. If you are not registered with the school district or the Albany County Board of Elections, you must do so prior to the vote. The district has established three dates for residents to register to vote on May 21. You may register anytime between 8:30 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. at any one of the elementary schools. Or from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the district office on the following dates, Thursday, May 9, Monday, May 13, and Tuesday, May 14. You may also register with the County Board of Elections during their normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. If you are not sure which elementary school to vote, please refer to our webpage. There's a link on the budget, use the link, Budget and Taxes, and use the quick link in the drop-down voter eligibility and absentee ballots. You can see if you're registered and where you vote in school elections. And the third item relates to the Capital Region BOC's budget and Board election vote. The 2019-20 Board of Cooperative Educational Services budget and election will take place on Wednesday, April 17, 2019. There are four seats up for election. This is the date of our special board meeting that takes place at 8 a.m. And now we move to action items. So I'll ask, is Sean on the line yet?
Christine, can I just ask a question about something you mentioned regarding the, if someone has a question as to which elementary school to vote in? Is there any other way for anybody to find out that information if they don't have web access? Is there a number to call?
They can call Linda.
They can call the school district. Okay.
And so now we move to action items, School Business Management. Neil?
First item this evening is a resolution to approve the appointment of Management Advisory Group to provide Medicaid third-party claiming services for the 2019-20 fiscal year.
May I have a motion to approve the Medicaid third-party billing services? Tim, second, Teresa. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 8-0.
Next item is a resolution authorizing the destruction of ballots from the 2018 school district election.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the destruction of the ballots? Seema, second. Judy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 8-0.
The next item is a resolution to enter into an installment purchase agreement with Capital Region BOCs, and this would be for a three-year agreement with the annual amount of $100,000, and that's for the purchase of computers.
May I have a motion to approve the installment purchase agreement resolution?
Aye.
Barbara, second. Gloria? Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah. Is this part of the Smart New York? No?
No, this will be coming out of our budget.
Okay.
So there is a clause in the resolution that says if the budget doesn't pass for some reason, this is contingent upon the budget passing.
Okay.
But we do need to get it in the queue for Capital Region BOCs to get the installment purchase set up and the equipment ordered, so we're trying to...
Thank you.
Get that stuff.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 8-0.
And finally this evening, we have two donations. The first is from Mr. and Mrs. Scott Friedman, who donated two new bookshelves to the Westmere Elementary Library. And then from Mr. and Mrs. Gregory Moore, they've donated an Echo Pen for the high school.
May I have a motion to accept the donations? Teresa, second. Judy? Are there any questions or comments, other than thank you for the very generous donations?
Oh, I had an order, an Echo Pen. Does anybody?
Sure, Neil knows.
So may I have to help me out? It's for students with disabilities, it's a translation device, an Echo Pen?
Oh, that's fine. It scans the words and reads aloud.
Okay, scans the words, and it scans it into a computer or device, or from text? Is that quite?
Actually, just read aloud.
Oh, read aloud, okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes 9-0. And now we can go back up to the Consent Agenda, which we already have a motion and a second. Do you want to approve them individually, A, B, and C?
We can do that.
Sure. Okay. So all those in favor of the minutes from March 19 and April 2?
Aye.
I will approve from the 19th, but abstain from April 2.
Same.
Aye.
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 All those in favor of the CPSE and CSE recommendations? Aye.
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 All those in favor of the Personnel Action Items? Please raise your hand, yes.
Aye.
Barbara, Ben?
Aye.
Judy, Gloria, Teresa. Okay, all those opposed? What did Sean vote?
Yeah, Sean. Sean? Sean, you're muted, Sean.
I'm voting no.
Okay, passes 5-4. And now we move back down to Superintendent Action Items. Marie?
So the first item for action is the proposal for the 2019-2020 budget. There is a resolution before you for $102,50,375. Last week, Tuesday, we were together and spent some time in a workshop talking about the adjustments to both the revenue and expenditures based on new information from the adoption of the superintendent's budget back on March 5. And we discussed some potential additions at the bottom of the page. I'm wondering if there is a need to review any of the adjustments to revenue or expenditures at this time, or if we're ready to just discuss?
I thought Barb was having you, you know, set out with the $57,000. It was good, made that clear about what the literacy lessons would be for. So I hope, they just came today, I think, so I hope that everybody got to see those.
So we want to do a motion and then...
So we can do a motion, yeah?
Okay. So can we have a motion to approve the adoption of the 2019-20 budget? Judy, second. Seema? Okay, now we'll open it up for comments and discussion. If anyone would like to be...
Christine?
Yes, Barbara?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed budget and add the $57,000 for the literacy lessons. I think it's really important that all our schools be equitable, and that the other three elementary schools do have this supplement, and I would very much think it appropriate that our two largest schools, Westmere and Gilderlin, would also have illiteracy lessons available to them. As we build our staff and try to accommodate so many of our foreign language students that are coming by the dozens, and the special ed students, I think it's really important that, you know, we provide them with a reading support that is so fundamental for them in the early grades.
Okay, Barbara has made a motion, is there a second? Gloria? Okay. So we take a vote on that individually now?
Unless there's more discussion.
Is there more discussion on that?
Is this just on the 57?
Yeah. Is there any discussion on this one? No?
No, I mean, we got that email today that explained it, it was pretty well outlined, right?
Okay, all those in favor of that one, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so passes 8-1. Any other items for discussion? Gloria?
I'd like to move that we amend the budget to include at least $40,000 towards the board's efforts to establish a district visioning. The way, we don't know exactly how we're going to move it, but I'd like to set that money in there so that we have the resources we need to move forward on that. It was defined as a number-one priority by most board, mostly all the board members back in December, and so I think at this point, I'd like to at least have that money set aside in there so that we can move forward and not lose another year.
Okay. Second, Judy, is there any discussion on this one?
I, I agree with this. I think that if we had visioning, perhaps, these, it's just hard to explain, but these items that are out of the, we could have come to an agreement ahead of time on some of these things if we had had some visioning in it. I just think that it would help us to have a sense of where we're going as a board and what our priorities are. And I think it's important to include it. I know we've worked with Robert, and I'm comfortable with him, and the variance in prices was rather significant. And I feel that his is a, he's a good person to work with, and the price for the services that he would provide is reasonable, so I would like to see that included also.
Neil, if there's a surplus in the budget, is this something that those surplus funds could be used for?
Yes.
Do you anticipate a surplus in the budget this year?
You mean out of this year's money or next year's money?
This year.
No.
At the end of this year, do you anticipate a surplus?
Well, we wouldn't be engaging in services until next year, so that money would have to be in the appropriate fiscal year.
So if there's a... So if there's a million-dollar surplus this year, that million dollars cannot be used for something like visioning, can't be put into-
Because the expenditure won't be made in this, if the expenditure isn't going to be made in this fiscal year, then you wouldn't be able to do that. You'd have to make the expenditure.
But if there were a surplus, you could use that money to, for tax relief, for example, even though that would be for tax relief next year.
Well, yes, because it carries forward, if you have too much, at the end of the year, if you have a balance, then you're able to put that into reserves, the law allows for that.
I'm in favor of also the idea of visioning, I just don't think we need to spend $40,000. I feel like there's probably a lot of talented people in the community, if we do a little bit more digging to find somebody, it just seems like a lot of money to spend on a visioning plan, and, I mean, we've talked about it all year, and I, you know, it's nothing come to fruition with no money, so I don't want to throw $40,000 at it.
So I want to lay in here, if I can, the, I don't think this is, well, excuse me, one, I think the, it's our need, the strategic plan, I don't think it's enough for our, for our-
Sean, we're going to put a microphone closer to you, because we can't really hear you.
We can't really hear you, Sean, if you couldn't.
All right, that's Washington DC, I guess. So, the concern I have is that we are operating with, based on a mission statement, the work that we're doing is guided by a mission statement and a mission statement only. I think we have gotten it to the point where we have a strategic plan to guide the decisions that we're making. I think that we developed a capital project plan based on good intentions, but we don't have a strategic plan to guide those decisions. That being said, I have said all year long that if we're going to add something in, we're going to take something out. I have not found the item to take out, so at this point, I, even though I'm part of that committee and suggest that we move down this path, I'm not in favor of putting this in, and rather I'd like to look for us to finally do this during the course of the year, we've been able to do this for other things, we're able to accommodate thought exchange this year into the program, we're making other changes and additions, I think that it's fair to say that it's a priority of the board, that we can find a way to do this without having to add it into the budget at this point.
Thank you, Sean. Others?
I'll just concur with what Seema-
I, uh-
Ben?
So, my feeling is that, you know, I feel like we know the process well enough that we could perhaps do without a consultant coming in, but we haven't, right? We've been talking about this for a couple of years now, and, you know, this is really important work, and if we need someone to come in and shepherd us along, 40 grand out of a $100 million budget, doesn't seem unreasonable to me. You know, again, I agree with kind of what everyone's saying, of can we move forward without it? Yeah, we, but will we? And, you know, if we put this money in, we can, and, and they can remind us and keep us focused and move us along so that by the end of the year, we're finally, practically done it. And based on how our budgets go, we'll probably have a surplus at the end of next year, you know, that, you know, maybe we can give back, but, you know, it's one thing to sit here tonight and say, ah, we don't need it, but, but I think that the empirical evidence is that we need it.
Thank you, Ben. Gloria?
I'd like to second Ben's comments, we've been talking about this, I don't know how long, maybe eight years, and we still spin our wheels, come every spring, we spin our wheels. This is not just us coming together and making some vision or, you know, laying out some strategic plan, we're talking, and I want to go back to it, one of our, Kim said in the beginning, the public comment, this is something much broader, this is binding a community together, so that we're all pulling in the same direction. And right now, we don't do that, we end up, you know, kind of wobbling along, and we're not all focused on the same vision. And yes, we have very talented people in this district, I agree with you, Seema, but it's very hard when you're in something, I think, my personal opinion is, it's very hard when you're in it, and steeped in it, to actually do the visioning, because you're, it's hard to see it from outside, and having someone who is not, you know, part of the whole situation, and from outside to kind of shepherd, ask the tough questions, I think we could benefit tremendously from that, to bring this community together, parents, students, you know, people out in the community that perhaps don't have kids in the school, I think those are voices we need to hear from, not just around election time, or not just when we cut something from a budget, but if we do it in a positive way, and build a vision together, then we could all be acting together in the same way, that's just personal.
I know that, there was one year they had a meeting at Tech Valley High School, I forgot what the meeting was called, or if anybody remembers. It had to do with the vision of the district.
It was a follow-up to the capacity study.
How could we use the extra space?
So it was very focused.
Very focused, how could we use the extra space in the schools?
That was at the Tech Valley meetings.
Okay.
That was the start of the four subcommittees that looked at preschool, adult, daycare.
I thought there was another one, I just remember coming, or maybe it wasn't here too, there was several meetings I've been to, that it was just, you know, run by the district, and we had people like community members come, family members, teachers, et cetera.
It was a budget workshop, I think. We've had a lot of community conversations over the years.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I don't remember the names of all the meetings, but I found those to be much more helpful than the one person we've had, and I agree with everything that you're saying about spinning the wheels, et cetera, I just feel like I've sat through a couple of sessions now with, you know, this person who we'd be spending $40,000 on, and that's what I'm guessing that you're using the money towards, and I just didn't find it very useful.
Well, you've got to remember, we did not go through the process of strategic planning with that person.
Right.
That was not, we didn't hire him to do that, that was a totally different situation, what we were looking for.
I don't think it even brought us in step closer to it, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I don't think that was the purpose of it.
I mean, I agree with everything that you're saying, I just, and I, you know, when I'm saying in the community, it doesn't have to be in the school district, I just mean in the Gilderlin, the greater Gilderlin community, or someone, you know, in the area. I know of another school board in the area that, you know, found someone in their district who does, you know, that kind of work at their place, so they were able to hire them for much less. So I just think that that's a lot of money to spend, because we've already talked about this, and there's not even like a real plan moving forward.
Other comments?
Christine?
Yes, Barbara?
I guess I'm a little bit jaded about consultants, although I've enjoyed Hendricks' short interaction that we've had, and, you know, we spend over $40,000 on that capacity study, and that is what, we spend over $40,000 on the special ed study, and that was a waste, and these are outside, you know, to look at our district. I agree with the vision, the concept, but I think maybe I would like to give our staff, our people, another shot at it, and not add another $40,000 into next year's budget, when we're already acting for a bond issue, you know, plus moving, and all these other things, so, I guess I would be willing to see what we could do for one more year, and then plan for the following year, and see if we really need it, because as I said, I think the district has been ill-served from the consultants that we hired before, although I, as I said, I found Hendricks', you know, very good for what he has done for us so far.
Thank you, Barbara.
You know, we're talking, I think we're all, excuse me, can I-
Oh, I was just going to say, other questions or comments, Gloria?
I just wanted to say to Barbara's point about, you know, we're talking about doing this again, about doing a quote "in-house," we have people that are doing full-time jobs, we have one teacher that's doing a full-time job plus, and now we're talking about taking a huge, very important piece, and saying, okay, now we're going to spread it over people who are already doing full-time jobs, and somehow, or get somebody to volunteer, designate to donate their time. I think if we don't take this seriously, and put the money behind someone who has done this work, this person, whether this person or not is this is the person, I don't know, I'm just pointing to this person because they've done it for BOSI's, they've done it for a number of school districts in this area. If we don't put our money behind someone who has done this work, and brought us, brought people to, to the point of having a strategic plan in a successful way, then we will spin our wheels again, and I'll tell you, my frustration with that is enormous.
I also want to chime in, I think this is, I also, I've done deal that we're hiring one individual, I think it's been assumed that because of the way we've been talking, because we have two past RFPs and some history with, with the one consultant, so, my thought here is it's not a committal to spend the money, but rather to set the money aside so that we can further explore that, but again, that being said, you know, I'm going to live by my own words, if I can't find something to take away, I'm not going to add something back in. I think it's valuable, I mean, 100% think it's valuable, but we also have to live within our means and figure out a way to get it done. Again, we've somehow managed to find ways to get other projects done during the course of the year, how we're not spending any time or energy or resources on a strategic plan is, it just escapes me.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand? Judy, Gloria? Ben's hand raised?
It's hand, it's up.
Okay. All those opposed, raise your hand? Okay, the motion does not pass. Any other items to discuss?
Well, there's the $5,000 that was recommended, for furniture replacement, mostly for desks and cafeteria tables, and I'd like to, I think that that's something that we probably should put in.
So you make a motion to include the $5,000? Okay, is there a second on the motion? Seema? Any discussion on this one? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand? Judy, Gloria, Tim, Seema. Whose hand is raised on the screen?
No one. Barbara, Sean, Ben.
This was a motion to put in the $5,000 for the furniture?
Yes.
Yes.
Any hands raised? Anybody in favor, raise your hand if you're in favor?
Favor or not?
Okay, everyone opposed, please raise your hand?
Opposed? All three.
Does not pass. Any other items? Okay, so now what we have on the table is the budget amended with the addition for the literacy lessons. Are there any other discussion items on the budget? Okay.
The five, oh no, that didn't pass, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor of the budget as amended? Please raise your hand? For yes?
I, oh, as amended, as amended.
Are they all?
All three.
Okay. Unanimously approved.
Um, are we going to then use? No, okay, but what I, my question is, do we use this money, this 242 minus the 57, do we put that, do we put that against the taxes, or do we put it into, or can I, can't we do that now? You know, or do we put it into, back into the fund balance?
I think that's a question for Neil.
Oh, come on.
Well, I mean, basically at this point, you're not putting it anywhere, we're just below the cap.
Right. Okay.
I mean, we're not raising taxes, we're not going to raise taxes to the limit of the tax gap.
Correct. Right now, we're sitting $185,000 below the tax gap with the budget amendments.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is the property tax report card for 2019-20, and this essentially is a document that will be amended to reflect what we just did, and it is a required document that shares with the state what our plans are relative to the tax cap.
May I have a motion to approve the property tax report card? Barbara, second. Teresa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine-zero.
The next item is a resolution to approve a dual agreement, this agreement would extend the probationary appointment of special education teacher Elizabeth Bremer to August 31st, 2020.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Seema, second. Judy? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Raise your hand? Passes nine-zero.
The next item is contract ratification, and this resolution is to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Gilderlin Central School District and the non-instructional supervisors and other management personnel of the Gilderlin Central School District for the duration of the collective bargaining agreement, which is July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2022.
May I have a motion to approve the contract ratification? Gloria, second. Seema? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine-zero.
And my last item is a second contract ratification, and this is a memorandum of agreement between the Gilderlin Central School District and the Gilderlin District Office Administrators for the duration of the collective bargaining agreement, July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2021.
May I have a motion to approve the contract ratification? Teresa, second. Judy? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine-zero. Thank you, Marie. Now we move to board committee reports, audit.
We met, we are meeting Thursday at 8:30.
Thursday at 8:30 at the district office?
Correct.
Next, we move to business practices.
Yes, we just met on April 8th. First item on our agenda was the Phillips hardware tax exemption, we received a letter dated March 15th, that the Gilderlin Industrial Development Agency notified the school district that an affected tax jurisdiction of the opportunity to provide oral or written comments on the IDA's proposed deviation from the agency's uniform tax exemption policy relative to Phillips hardware, they're asking for a tax exemption request, and comments are due to the IDA before, on or before April 22nd. So we discussed that at our meeting, their, Phillips Hardware is requesting the exemption in the form of a 10-year payment in lieu of taxes, or a pilot agreement, it's sometimes called, the pilot would provide a 50% exemption from taxes in their first year, with such percentage exemption declining by 5% in each subsequent year, until the ninth year, when it would be no exemptions. The total value of the exemption has been calculated by the IDA at $82,000 for the school district and the public library combined. The Phillips application indicated that it intends to build a new hardware store right next to the existing one, and take down the original hardware store and build a new convenience store, with a Dunkin' Donuts and a gas station. The application also states that five new jobs would be created, three full-time, two part-time, estimated salaries of $35,000 and $12,000. So we discussed this, the committee discussed the hardware, the pilot proposal agreement, and we recommend to the board that we provide the IDA with our standing position on the pilot agreements, as was described in our May 5th, 2017, letter to the IDA, and I think, Neil, did you put a copy attached to that? Okay, I didn't print that out. And our comment on those, that proposed application, at that time, we stated that the school district generally disfavors the granting of real property tax exemptions, due to the lowering of the district's tax levy limit threshold in the first year of the pilot agreement. So the committee is recommending to the board that we let IDA know that we still support our position from two years ago.
Gloria, is that 82,000 over the life of the 10 years, not per year?
I think it's the fir, is it the life, the whole life?
Over the life.
Yeah, okay. Legal services agreement, I know you're going to talk to Kim more, more further, further about this, I'll just fill you in on what we talked about, the current three-year agreement with Honeywell Law Firm for legal services, exclusive of special education matters, will expire on June 30th, 2019, so- expire on June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. So, we received a proposal from the Honeywell Law Firm to continue the general legal counsel for the ensuing three-year period, starting this July first. The agreement would maintain the thirty-five thousand dollar general retainer fee for routine legal advice and counsel and contract reviews, including any supporting research. The contract renewal does include a twenty-hour per increase for non-retainer services such as litigation. The first increase, uh, the first such increase was back in twenty fifteen, and we did ask, the committee did ask Neil if other firms were similar, and we were well below that in terms of payment, so we were, we were within the ballpark in terms of if we go ahead with this. Um, given the firms demonstrate a performance service and expertise, our recommendation is that we approve this proposed agreement for the three-year period. Uh, I did bring up at that point that I felt that our committee has, the business practices has, to do due diligence every so many years, we usually say, let's put out a call for, you know, see if anybody new has come into the area. We've done this before with many kind of business agreements, but, and we did it, I know, I don't know how many years, maybe four, five years ago, we did it with the legal firms, or the contractors, and the architects, we've done it, just to make sure we were keeping abreast of who's moved into the area, maybe there are better fees, you know, services might differ. So, my suggestion to the committee was that we, after this, at the end of this contract, the last year, that we do that again. That we just see who's out there now, and see if, uh, that we're being, we're doing our due diligence to making sure we're being competitive.
You mean at the end of the next three-year term?
Yeah, yeah, at the la-, that last year, as we move towards the end of that third year.
When was the last time we did it?
I think, six, was it two, two contracts ago with Jeff?
I was relatively new here. It was like my second year we did it, so about six years ago.
Six, I think it's six years, I remember. So I remember, we interviewed the law firms, and that's how we do it. It was, it's a very, it's a good process, and I think it's, it's a good thing to do. Just make sure we don't, you know, I mean, we've been very happy with the firm, but it's always good to make sure nothing's changed.
So why, why wait another three years?
Uh, what we didn't, we feel like we had to do, now we've only had, you know, like a certain amount of time with him, and then this is a new firm, and we've been very happy with it, so we weren't ready to jump into it. At this point, we hadn't, it hadn't come up before, and it's the end of the year, so we thought, well, we're not gonna throw it out now as we're moving into the, for a certain year. But we felt comfortable in recommending that we do it at the end next, that three contracts would give us enough of an indication of, um, if we wanna stay here, if we wanna move.
Okay, and then what about, um, Gervin and Ferlazzo? Don't we use them primarily for special ed?
I believe so, yeah, for certain, certain areas, but, you know, you talk about that.
That agreement is not up yet.
That one's not up?
No.
Um, any other questions or comments on that issue?
Can, uh, can we make sure that Neil, when you respond, it can't, it's all of us?
Yes, I can do that. I'll probably talk to Kim, but I'll summarize the conversation.
Uh, we also discussed the, uh, Gilderland Public Library debt schedule, and I'm gonna let you explain all that, because if I read this, it's gonna sound like a lot of gibberish to everybody. You can put it in such nice, you know.
Well, as you know, Gilderland Public Library has a capital construction project that will be going on the May twenty-first ballot, along with our budget capital project and, um, bus fund as well. Under the terms of the law that relates to school district public libraries, which is a unique, uh, concept in New York State, there are different rules for that. What has to happen is, if they wanna do a capital construction project, we're talking about the library, they have the option of asking, requesting from the school district whether to carry the debt or not. They can choose not to do that, or they can choose to do that. Uh, if they choose to request the school district to carry the debt, um, you have a resolution put before you, which you did, and you have no choice but to approve it. That's just the way the law works. I'm not quite sure I understand that you have no option with that, but you have to, they have to have you approve that in order for it to happen. So that has all happened. So what also is part of that resolution is that the school district now, because it is our debt obligation, we get to determine the terms of the debt obligation. So we will be working with fiscal advisor and bond counsel in terms of, of that process. What the question then becomes, unlike the school district where we have state aid tied to our project, we typically would use a fifteen-year term and line it up with state aid, and that's allowable by the law, uh, in terms of the type of construction that we're doing. There is no state aid associated with the construction project at the library, so that gives us some flexibility in terms of borrowing structures. So, the fiscal advisor came up with a schedule of either five, ten, fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five years, so we have all of those options available to us. So really, the point is, when we get to the, to the time when we need to borrow debt for them to do the construction, we'll have to figure out how that's going to impact our budget in that particular year. It's probably, it's not nineteen twenty, it'd be twenty twenty-one. And we'll have the conversation at that time, what makes the most sense in terms of the overall budget, because we will be adding debt payments, um, selecting the appropriate term at that time to make sure it fits within the finances of the school district. So, um, so we have a range of options out there. We have tax impact related to each of those options. We suggested the library they go with a twenty-year, uh, tax impact, just because it's unlikely that we'll do a five or ten-year borrowing. Uh, when you do a shorter borrowing, obviously, the interest payment, principal and interest payments are much greater. Uh, we'll probably have to spread it out into fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five years. We won't know that until we actually get to the budget process and determine how much, how many funds we have available, and what kind of impact that will be. So, uh, for now, it's really giving everybody a heads up that this conversation will be coming next year as part of our budget discussion, and at that time, uh, we'll be making a recommendation, administration will and the board will be dealing with that as part of the budget process in terms of how, the length of term of the borrowing, and then we will have options at that time.
Much better than I could've done it, Neil, thank you. And our last item, we had a little time left, and Teresa reminded us about the Cobblestone Schoolhouse, and, which hasn't been on our radar all year, nobody's said anything. So, uh, we talked a little bit about the fact that the district has done some informal searches, sending out letters, looking for people related to the Van Renssellers, or somehow that could take an interest in the, in the schoolhouse, and we haven't gotten any real bites. Um, so, the committee decided that we would like to recommend that during the next school year, beginning in September, that we actually talk about doing, making a plan for moving this, moving this ahead, either putting out the formal search and putting out the ten thousand dollars, whatever we have to do legally, to get a formal search done so that the title can be cleared, uh, and then we could, you know, sell it, or whatever, but to move ahead, because we, it's just languishing still. And I think just, that is frustration. And that's it. We don't have another meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Communications.
Uh, April first, we wanted to have one more meeting before tonight's board meeting to specifically talk about strategic planning, as you saw the outcomes of that. Uh, so we'll go back and, uh, just keep moving forward here. Our next meeting's gonna be April twenty-ninth, at eight AM at the district office. We're gonna review the board activity calendar. Uh, we'll talk about the board meeting evaluations, review and discuss, so make sure, uh, before you leave tonight, if you could fill out your evaluation, um, I will email mine in. Uh, then also, we'll talk about website analytics for the capital project, to get an understanding how well our message is being received, or how much people are looking for details on the budget and the capital project. That's it.
Thank you Shaun. Policy, Barb?
Barbara, you're muted.
There we go. Um, we began, we met last week, and, um, we began discussing a number of policies that are still sort of in the pipeline, and we hope to meet again, uh, after the school vacation, either the week after or the following week, and I do, we'll be coming out for that.
Thank you Barb. Public comment number two. Board issues, ideas, and sharing? Okay, so then, sure.
There, it was a reminder in the Friday packet that we are putting together a, uh, team of stakeholders for our counseling plan that will, um, need a board member to serve on that meets twice-a-year committee. So if anyone is interested, uh, please let me know. And second, we are currently working on our, Barbara's waving her hand, thank you. We are currently putting together, uh, very brief videos to capture small, um, insights into our capital project, and, uh, we're interested in a board member who would be willing to make a cameo appearance and speak about the project. So if you're interested in doing that, please let me know.
Marie, in terms of the committee, have we received a lot of interest? And how do we select community members who provide a letter of interest?
For the counseling plan? Lisa, I'm not gonna make you walk, but if we, she is injured. Uh, do we have community members who have submitted?
Any community members expressing interest, we'll send them to the committee.
And is there a process for selecting?
Our subcommittee of counselors will work with us to discuss. I'm sure we have a-
Representative.
-representation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Teresa, second. Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks Barb.
Have a good night.